The meeting, could somebody shut the back doors back here so we...
Oh.
Entry, there's the back door.
Does she want? Uh, roll call please.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner David?
Here.
Commissioner Yehudah?
Here.
Commissioner Walsh?
Here.
Here. Uh, let's please stand for the whole big prayer and pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this meeting tonight. I pray, Lord, you'd give us wisdom and guide us as a commission to do things that are best for our community. And, Lord, we do pray for our first responders and firefighters, pray for our troops serving abroad. And, Lord, we pray most of all that you would bless this city, give our people here jobs and good jo- good-paying jobs. Lord, help us to see our s- city also look beautiful and grow and be a flourishing community. And, Lord, we ask that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, is there any addition or relations to the agenda?
We have one addition. It'll be, uh, under section number seven, item number four. It's agreement for Smith and Oaks for the Sea Cliff Surface Preservation Grant.
I move we approve the agenda with one addition under new business.
I'll second it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on it?
Is this something that has to be done in the right way?
We can hold off two weeks on it, but, um, we're kind of, uh, under the gun with KDOT to get this project, um, let so we can get the ninety-ten cost benefit. We can talk about it underneath that item.
Okay. If any more discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Awards and proclamations, uh, Park City Police Department Life Saving Award presentation to Officer Corey Tuckshorn.
Good evening. I'm Captain Jim Holloway of Park City Police Department. It's my honor tonight to present the Life Saving Award to Officer Tuckshorn. If she would step up here, please. On January thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, Officer Corey Tuckshorn was sent to a residence in Arcane City where a seven-week-old baby had stopped breathing. Officer Tuckshorn arrived at the house and found the baby limp and not breathing. She immediately took charge of the situation by picking up the baby, assessing the baby's breathing, laying the child in one of her arms and giving back blows. The child eventually began coughing and showing signs of life by faintly crying. Corey continued to talk to the baby and the family members while monitoring the breathing. Arcane City MS arrived and transported her to the local hospital where she made a full recovery. Officer Tuckshorn performed her duties flawlessly while handling the stressful situation by remaining calm, properly assessing the situation, and executing her plan to save a human life. It is with great pride that we present the Arcane City Police Department's Life Saving Award to Officer Corey Tuckshorn on this nineteenth day of March, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you so much. Uh, recognition of visitors, Etsinawa. Uh, I guess, Sandy, you want to talk about that tonight?
Thank you for allowing us to give an update on Etsinawa. I believe in your packet you'll find the story of Etsinawa, and then I also included the feasibility study. The feasibility was- study was done last year, and it provides a five-year, ten-year plan for the conservancy and its partners. So first of all, where are we going with Etsinawa? What are the potentials? What are the possibilities? First of all, the govern- the, um, feasibility study established a governance council of four partners, and those are the four partners. And each partner contributes to the project through input and various resources. And if you recall, the city signed an MOU last year that indicated what- what resources the city thought they could contribute to the project. This is currently the conservancy board. It's made up of a variety of local citizens, all working, uh, conjointly on the project. So what are the challenges of the project? Well, we all know that this is a very long-term project. Archaeology doesn't happen quickly. Um, most of Etsinawa is on private property, so that is a concern. And, of course, the lack of artifacts and the slowness of those artifacts coming up out of the ground is a challenge. Opportunities, obviously, we've already rewritten history of the local area. Um, we would like to showcase artifacts. We, I picked up some artifacts last week from the Kansas Historical Society that'll be in the new exhibit out at the museum. Those artifacts were from the nineties bypass Tyback Levy dig. Um, we, of course, want to encourage tourism. We do give tours of the area showing various sites. Those have been very popular, and, of course, we want to preserve the site.
How many tours do you think you gave last year? How many people you think went through those tours?
Um, it was nine hundred, and some people actually took the tour in that year period. So what's new for Etsinawa? First of all, we now know Etsinawa extends all the way to Winfield. That is a new development. Originally, we thought this- that the town existed a five-mile area to the north along the Walnut. Now we know it extends on both sides of the Walnut all the way to Winfield. About twenty years ago, there was a site discovered up by Augusta that has a lot of the similarities to our site. And so now the archaeologists are thinking that possibly this town might go maybe stopping and starting all the way to Augusta. But we've only verified that it goes to the Winfield Fairgrounds at this point. Um, many repositories around the area have lots of artifacts. There have actually been lots of digs here, uh, the first one starting in eighteen ninety-eight. And a lot of the local universities and other archaeological and anthropo- anthropological entities have those artifacts. And so we're working on getting some of those returned back to the community. Um, we have located the specific information on the dig for the country club. When the country club was established in nineteen fifteen, there were about fourteen mounds on that area. Most of those were, uh, leveled. Uh, there was some digging that took place in nineteen sixteen, and we now have a record of everything that came out of that dig, and hopefully try to locate those artifacts based on where they were sent out to. Um, as you know, we have a French fort to the south of here between Arcane City and New Kirk. A lot of people call it Trader's Bend. Um, that area has become of particular importance. The French came up and put that camp at the mouth of Deer Creek in about nineteen oh-six. It's seventeen oh-six. And it stayed there until about seventeen twenty-four. At that time, it disappeared, which leads us to believe possibly that that's when the town actually was abandoned. We know by- by seventeen forty that when some white settlers came up on an expedition, that the town was there, but all of the people were gone. So the question is, what happened to them? Did they leave by choice? Was it disease? There could have been a lot of components involved in that. Um, we are continuing to develop the battlefield, which is out by the Crestwood area. Uh, we're taking a lot of input from the Land Owners Association on what we can do with that area and what would be feasible for that neighborhood. And the last item is the conservancy has leased the Lake Louise property, if you're familiar with that. That is directly across the highway from the country club on the same side of the river. And our intent with that is to create some outdoor exhibits, some things that would have shown how they lived, what type of dwellings they were in, maybe some trails down by the river. And then the big plateau area that is up by Eighty-first Road is where we would hope to put an interpretive center at some point in the future. The date for an interpret- interpretive center has been kicked around. I've heard everything from five to twenty years. It really all depends upon how fast the research moves. That's sort of shows you where Lake Louise is. It's- here is the actual country club, and it's right across the highway from the country club in that boot-shaped area. So our goals are to develop Lake Louise into some type of an attraction that hopefully we can add a visitor's center or interpretive center to in the long run. We have created a landowners association of all the people who own land that we believe to be within the Etsinawa area here and up to Winfield. Uh, we'd like to actually start some high school field schools and some undergraduate field schools that could possibly help with the research and also get people interested in archaeology in the area. Uh, we'll continue to give the tours this year, and we also would have created an exhibit at the museum that will be opening in April that kind of tells the story of Etsinawa. The longer-term vision would be to acquire land as it becomes available. That would be properties within the area of Etsinawa that we feel would be of particular importance to the project. Obviously, to create an interpretive center or some type of museum, create some archaeological space to process some of the artifacts that are either in Topeka or in other repositories. We'd like to grow public awareness, including in the community, about Etsinawa and what the history. And obviously, we are search- si- we are seeking a battlefield grant for the battlefield out in Crestwood. And basically, all that does is provide some signage, maybe provide some apps on a phone that you can use that would tell the story of the battlefield. You- you are one of the four partners in the project, so I will be updating you maybe twice a year more if you- if you'd like to have that. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Yes, ma'am. When you say that the artifacts that are retrieved from the ground and are taken to other universities and colleges...
Well, that was actually in the past, but- but the way it works is when whichever university is in charge of the research, when the artifact is pulled from the ground, it has a number of steps it has to go through. It has to be carbon dated. There's all kinds of things that have to be done to it. Now, the way Kansas works is anything we retrieve from your property belongs to you. You have the right to have it back. You can sign it over to the conservancy. You can donate it to another entity. So those artifacts will come back. But what's happened in the past is that those artifacts have gone out to various repositories and not been returned. So that's what we're working on, trying to find out where everything is and- and how to retrieve it to get it back to the local area.
Well, when Dr. Blakesley goes out and digs during the summer digs that he did, does the items he retrieves go back to WSU or...?
The items that have been retrieved in the last four years on the digs are at WSU.
They automatically become his or...?
No, they don't become his, but because it has to go through the steps of carbon dating and all the things he does, it's sp- he's supposed to do what he needs with it, and then it's supposed to come back to the landowner. And then the landowner decides if they want it in the museum, or they want to donate it to the conservancy, or what they would like done with it at that point. So we don't have any of those back yet, but we have been asking him to send those back to us.
What was the response?
The response was, they're still working on them. But we'll keep on top of that and make sure those come back. Now we have to go back to the prior digs and sort of figure out where everything went. You know, we know in the last four years what we have, everything that's come out of the ground and where it went. But on those earlier digs, we've got to do a little bit of backtracking on that.
And that includes Kansas State, University of Kansas?
Yes. The local repositories, uh, K-State is not an archaeology school, but it's KU, um, University of Missouri, Oklahoma State, University of Oklahoma, Wichita State. So it's most of the region's schools with the exception of maybe K-State. Fort Hays is a repository as well.
So how many, uh, items are in these other repositories?
Based on the writings, the publications that kind of came out of the digs that were done in the past, a lot. There are a great number of items. Um, I was able to locate the items from the nineteen sixteen dig at the country club when it was created. Um, that was sort of the first step, because that's as far back as- as we knew that things had not been returned. But there have been many, many digs here since that time period, and not all of them were as public as the bypass dig. You know, everybody kind of knew about that because of the amount of artifacts that came out. Now, the artifacts from the bypass dig, we may never get back ownership because that land was owned by KDOT at that time because of the highway project. So KDOT actually gave- relinquished the rights on those to the Kansas State Historical Society. And at this point, I'm not sure and not- have not found a way to retrieve those, although they do loan us items to show.
Well, that's all stored in Topeka, isn't it?
I'm sorry, what?
That's all stored in Topeka?
Correct. A lot of the artifacts from that dig have not been catalogued or gone through or anything because there are so many. I believe there was a hundred and eighteen linear feet full of boxes. And you can imagine artifacts are very small, so you've got a lot of stuff there. So we're working on it. We're- we're looking to see what we can do to- to get some of those artifacts returned back to this community.
So was- did they start, uh, keeping records in nineteen sixteen or before that? Did anybody keep records before that?
The very first dig that's documented is in eighteen ninety-eight by a guy by the name of Bert Moore, who was digging a cellar for a house he was building out by the country club. And he actually had a guy come in from the University of Wisconsin. But what happened was he started digging the cellar, and he actually went into one of the mounds. And so he fell through, and there were lots of items in there. So he brought him in. That's the first documented dig that we have that was official, if you will.
Okay.
But there have been many since then.
Since...
So it's kind of a matter of, you know, researching it all and pulling all those papers together and figuring out where things went. And, you know, it's hard to retrieve something when you don't know what you're asking for. Anything else I can answer, Jane?
It's exciting, though, I can tell you. Thanks, Sandy. Uh, comments from the audience for items not on agenda? I see Phos, if you've signed up, but, uh, I think what you're going to talk about is going to be a no-business number one. If you want to wait, can we get to that?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second. Okay, it's been moved to second. Uh, Nick, you want to just mention on item number two?
Uh, that's a yearly housekeeping item, which basically says that, uh, it's a perennial statement of assurance from the Kansas Department Wildlife, Parks, and Tourism for our land-water conservation, um, properties. Uh, we have several properties throughout the city that have received those land-water conservation funds in the past. And basically, um, we just have to maintain those areas in a- in a similar function that is of the wish of Kansas Department Wildlife Works.
Do- I have a question. It was asked, uh, does the- do they ever add anything to that? Any- like, we have a new, uh... Exe- except for the, uh, Kansas or Arkansas River for the kayaks, the- you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, that's not part of the land-water conservation fund. That property isn't. Major properties that we have is like Spring Hill Golf Course is underneath Land Water Conservation Fund. Wilson Park, that entire area is under Land Water Conservation Fund, um, because we received money at some point for some improvement at that park. And unfortunately, once you're in the program, you can- pretty much, it's near impossible to get out of the program because it becomes part of the- that federal, um, federal parks program is really what it is.
I was wondering if that, uh, little place we approved several years ago, they'd pick up? They don't pick anything up like that?
They- they could, but my recommendation would be not to- not to add anymore if you don't have to. We are going to go after Land Water Conservation Fund grant for Wilson Park, but that is already existing LWCF property, so it's not like we're going to be adding additional property.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Okay, is there any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. No-business number one.
Consider second reading of a resolution authorizing the city to file an application for a historic preservation fund grant for a national register of historic places nomination revising the downtown, Arcane City Commercial District.
Okay, I'm here tonight to kind of provide an update for where we're at on this. Again, this is just as a quick refresh, this is a grant, um, that would go off the recommendations from the two thousand seventeen, eighteen survey report that was done by Spencer Preservation. And one of the, um, recommendations was to look at expansion of historic history. So since- since we, uh, since I last was before you back, uh, February fifth, I believe it was, um, we did have a meeting, the Historic Preservation Board did have a meeting on the eighteenth of February. It wasn't attended very well. I think there was about three people here. Um, I think whether it was an issue depended if I recall. Um, after that, because we obviously need to talk to all the owners that we can, Phos Farah and I went and visited with a number of property owners in the district. Um, unfortunately, a lot of the owners, um, were, you know, somewhat interested but weren't quite ready to say, yes, I support this. And, um, so right now, we have like two people that said yes and one that said absolutely not. Um, but the interest obviously is still there. Um, basically as it stands now, we're kind of in a limbo period because we really would have to have the full support. Um, as far as, um, staff is concerned, I still feel this project is worth pursuing. Uh, certainly would benefit the community if we, um, add some additional properties into the historic district to help preserve the downtown area. Um, one of the things that we'd like to look into is further education on what it means to be in the historic district and what the requirements are, and what funding is available. Well, there is, but there is some funding out there. Um, so that's something we'd like to work on some more. And- and if all of us felt at least, it would also help the current people that are in it, show them just a little bit more about what it really means to be in the district. So that's something we're going to be working on regardless of how we do with this program. Um, in addition to that, um, Phos Farah, of course, has signed up. He wanted to speak a little bit, um, about that, and I wanted to kind of let him have a few words, if you want to too.
Sure.
Good evening. Uh, just to tag on to him before I read from here, it was a bit of nerve-wracking, so anyway, Katrina Ringler up in Topeka, she's in charge of, uh, this program, uh, the Historic Preservation Program, well, she's one of the officers there anyway. Uh, she said she's interested in coming down here sometime this year and, uh, talking to, uh, I've assumed to the public, so I hope that's part of that education process. I just talked to her recently. Okay, now I have to ask you, this is a flashback, when I was, uh, I remember growing up as a kid, uh, here in Arcane City, how proud I was when I rode or drove up Summit Street from the north and saw the multiple blocks of adjacent commercial buildings which were lit up at night from the crest of the hill leading to downtown. It's still a very beautiful sight, one of many Kansas, one that not many Kansas ha- towns have. Now, flash forward to the present, when Josh White and I recently took a lockdown summit, uh, to the proposed expanded district, which would be around the one-hundred block of North First and, uh, North Summit, and then down in the south part of Summit. Uh, anyhow, we- we talked to some of the owners, as Josh mentioned, uh, about this proposal. And, uh, I must say that although one person in the meeting said absolutely not with that property, none of the people we talked to on the street came out and said they were opposed to it being part of the district, but- but they did have questions about what that would mean financially to them and concerns that planned renovations would cost them more money, uh, th- uh, than if they did the projects on- on their own instead of going through Topeka. Okay, well, from a few of you commissioners, uh, and former commissioners that I've heard, expressed the sentence, "The government is not going to tell me what to do with my building." Well, okay, so those two things. The financial question is a legitimate one, but the statement that the government will tell a property owner what he can or cannot do with this building does not ring true. First of all, Topeka has little to do with what happens in our downtown properties, and that's one of the reasons I talked to Katrina up in Topeka. She said she doesn't- we are now a certified local government and have been for the last seven years. You guys, or commission at that time, approved that, and that means that we have a lot of control over our historic properties. And I'm part of that. I'm part of the Historic Preservation Board, which as a CLG, we have much more control of our historic properties. We review the significant changes and for historic buildings. Any significant changes we review, and then we advise the city on historic standards, but the city makes a final call. And that's happened a few times, and, uh, it's worked pretty well so far. On finances, yes, it may in some cases be a little more expensive to keep a building in good shape, which is while doing that to preserve the historic features of that building. But I don't want people to confuse keeping buildings up to city code with historic preservation. And you have to keep the building up to city code anyway. You might as well, in my view, uh, do it in a manner that keeps up the historic value of the building. And, but let's look at the bigger picture. Do we, as a town, honor what our predecessors have built and have left us as a legacy? When a visitor to town sees that we care about the past, the visitor is impressed. The visitor says, "That's a good place to live and to raise our kids." On the other hand, if a visitor sees a pristine building such as the Burford, which took advantage of the historic tax credits next to a dump of a building not being kept up, what does that visitor think? So from a book I purchased, uh, and Josh and I went to the State Preservation Conference recently in Lawrence, and Lawrence has a downtown historic district that's really hopping with people. We were there during a, like, festival where they were playing and then allowing, uh, some alcoholic beverages and so on. Uh, and families were there and little kids were laid on the sidewalks, but that was- it was kind of interesting to see how hopping that place is. I know we're not in that shape right now. But anyhow, this book that I got at the preservation conference and the author of the book also spoke keynote, so, uh, let me just quote from the book. "So sound communities can't be achieved by standing on abstract principles, especially if those principles give folks an excuse for acting irresponsibly. Principles of freedom are the foundation of free government. And free government holds that when the sentence read is self-government enough to do good things, those things should be encoded in law and supported by institutions equal to the task." And Ronald Reagan, when he talked at Sixty Minutes, the TV show, was quoted as saying, "The greatest leader is not the one who does the greatest things, but the ones who gets the people to do the greatest things." Well, what I guess, bottom line is I'm saying we are- we are the certified local government. We are the people. We're the people who have the downtown and it's on the logo. Uh, so what are we going to do with it? And then, and finally, I'll just say that that article that I- that Andrew passed out is from Manhattan Kansas Business Magazine. And then, and finally, I'll just say that that article that I, that Andrew passed out is from Manhattan Kansas Business Magazine on the use of state historic preservation grants, which I think there's some misinformation on that, uh, which some people have, decorated historic building. And it's about a building, an old building that had multiple purposes in the past. And the owner was able to do quite a bit to make it relevant to the present. So, uh, that's, that's my, uh, comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fos.
Are there any questions?
That lady you were talking about, uh, when did you set, have you set a date yet for her to come down or not?
No, it hasn't been. I, I, I will follow up on that, but that was within the last couple of weeks. Uh, Josh, I don't know if you talked to her.
I, I did, we haven't set.
Okay, so you, you are planning on having her down to speak?
For, for something, yeah.
For, for, for that preservation thing?
Yeah, whatever form that takes, we're still working.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be good, because I think.
Yeah. Well, I think there's a lot of people that don't understand exactly what the historic preservation grant, fund grant is. And, and I think there's, from the past, there's a lot of people that hear bad things that have happened.
Well, I think, and what I get from the building owners that we talked to is that, I mean, they think it's kind of, it's a big hassle, which, um, partly that's true. They have to, you have to go through some hoops, but people like the woman that did our, uh, survey to update the district, Brenda Spencer, she was here about a year ago and she's the one that said, hey, you know, you've got buildings now. Cause the last time we did this, uh, survey was nineteen eighty-three. A lot of buildings about fifty, over fifty years old since, uh, that can be added to the district. That's why we're talking about it. And, uh, she basically can lead you by the hand through the process. And I, you know, we're looking at, and I know in one case in our city, it's a church, that, that's going to talk to her about that. And, um, her cost for that is not outside. I mean, uh, so if somebody had a big project that they wanted to do anyway, and they went through her, she could do a lot of the paperwork and stuff, or somebody like her. So that's one thing.
Well, Fos, I might say this. I know the Burford was a, was the one that really benefited from the tax credits. I mean, from the historical thing.
Yes.
Because, you know, it, it.
Didn't a roof, was it like an eighty thousand?
Yeah, but I'm just saying the, the overall picture on it was that, you know, they got the tax credits on it, you know, and it, and they raised a bunny for it and stuff like that, outside money and grants and so forth. So it fell into this thing just perfectly. But you take a person like Dan, that his building, and he had a problems, you know, with his windows and stuff and trying to, you know, get them fixed. And, and then, uh, or was it Taylor's, Taylor Drugs, you know, on their windows and stuff.
But it turned out, I mean, both of those properties we surveyed by Brenda were contributing properties. So, yeah, I mean, yeah, okay, they, they said, and even in this competition, it's, you should repair the wood or get, get good wood on there. And there's, I'm not going to get into all these.
Yeah, I understand that.
But those windows, the way they look, both the Taylor and, and Dan's property, have blended in very well with this thing. And, uh, that's the bottom line. Uh, that little article you got has the, uh, I don't know where I read that, but, but on the window thing, uh, that if you do use other materials, it should blend in. And so that was, that was what happened here. I mean, we did waffle a little bit on, on Fred Taylor's windows, but the city eventually said, go ahead. And, and it was bound to be within the history. So, you know, that's just.
So have they eased restrictions on windows, any, to where they will look good, even if it's not?
Well, I want to preserve the look. I mean, John, all right, I'll just tell you John Seiger, who is kind of the character. But I mean, he's the one that did the windows in Dan's building. And, uh, when, when Brenda came down, he said, you know, look at these, uh, I did this. I researched the history. They're, uh, I don't know, is it vinyl or plastic?
They're vinyl.
Vinyl.
Which is plastic. I mean, that plastic, no goes.
And then he made the comment, uh, and I don't know, this is secondhand, so I can't prove this. But he said, he said, you know, up in Topeka, the state capital, they put in new windows somewhere. And I guess they would just stay material, you know, or the US Capitol. So, and those obviously were considered historic. So, uh, I don't know. Some, some, that they would prefer that you keep that. But as you'll see in that article, for example, there was a, that building, the old building in Manhattan that they made into a, a real popular place now. Originally was a, some kind of bar, but it had a, a kitchen or something that people wanted to get rid of for years. Well, finally, they did get rid of it and, because it'd been used for multiple purposes after that. So there's some exceptions. Home, was it Home National? Or, no, Union State that, uh, wanted to, that our board looked at and wanted to renovate some of their inside. Well, we had no historic pictures of exactly how it looked in nineteen eleven or whatever. And there's been many changes since then. We approved that and that has been approved too. So, uh, so I mean, it's, the idea is that, okay, we had a lot of people, of my predecessors who built those buildings, one was training in stonemasonry from Italy. I mean, yeah, I just think it'd be a shame that, you know, nobody's gonna, I mean, I don't, wouldn't think a building owner in this town would want to do something garish with the building anyway. So why not go with the, you know, the rules as they can and, uh, stay a contributing thing, contributing part of the district and get your, uh, tax rebates. It is a little, you know, I know the economy is a big factor, but that's really all I can say about that. Any other questions?
Well, I think the biggest thing right now, I'm just talking out loud, but is, uh, is what districts we were, that we're already in right now. I mean, that was already included. I think that we probably ought to have meetings like what Josh said, come up and, and have everybody come in, you know, and sit down so that they understand, you know, how this thing works and so forth and get some feedback from them, you know. Uh, I know it, it worked wonderful for the Burford. I mean, that, it, without that, the Burford probably wouldn't be here, you know, today. And it'd be a tore down building, but, but I also see private enterprise, you know, like Dan's, you know, uh, problem and stuff, you know, getting cash. But I, I'm not against, I, I think it's a great idea, but it's just that, uh, I think we need to get more people interested in it, you know.
Absolutely. I agree with that. So.
And I think it's just a matter of communicating with them and, and.
Another interesting thing that, uh, Brenda told me is that now there's sort of a big trend. In fact, she says it's been busier than ever with people with all over the state towns, uh, applying for historic tax credits. So, I mean, if we're saying we're totally against that, we're kind of going even against the trend of what's going on in the country.
Yeah, it's, it's a national trend for sure, because the, uh, new millennials and everything want to go back into downtowns, reinvest and make it look like it did back in the fifties and sixties and forties. And so in, in larger cities, you're going to see huge pushes to redo those old buildings to where they were originally. And, and you're seeing it all over the country currently. Definitely is a big trend.
So, anyway, it's. So, yeah, I agree. We ought to get some public thing going on. So, that'd be, that'd be great. So that way, you know, and maybe we have done as good a job as we can as they can, but we're wanting to.
Sure, it's a working, it's always a working process. And, but I think that, you know, we've never really brought them all together, I don't think, have we, Josh and just?
Well, we've, we've had a couple of meetings over the years where we try to draw people in. In fact, I think Katrina that you mentioned has been, has been down here before a time or two. So it, sometimes it comes down to getting people to agree, but.
Yeah.
We consider to provide the opportunity.
Thank you.
Uh, on this, we talked quite a bit about it Friday, but, um, what benefit? How many people do you have to have to approve this? Did you get the amount?
We, we have not received enough support.
So we.
Actually apply for the grant right now.
Yeah, so we can't.
Yeah, we're pretty much out of time.
Yeah.
The grant has to be turned in by the twenty nineth of this month.
Yeah, that's what it says. So, but we can always apply again, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You can, you can, you can back up into and focus on the education side of it.
That might be a good thing, cause.
Yeah, Brenda said that too, the one that did the survey.
Cause I'm learning a little bit more all the time about it and I, you know, I don't, I wouldn't want to be forced to put a window in that somebody says I have to, because there's no way you can put those windows back in.
But in some cases, there is.
Yeah, yeah, so, so okay, I guess we.
Just wait till we read.
Not do anything.
I did want to give you the reports.
Sure, well, thank you.
Thank you.
It always helps to get more information.
Well, I'm not, not hearing any motion to bring this forward. I, um, I guess we go on to the next item. Uh, it's not, that means it's not negative, it's not positive. It's just, I think we just need to go back and, and get more information to the public, you know, of the people on the, the buildings and stuff. And then come back to this down the road, because we can always apply next year and stuff. But, uh, I'm, it, it's not being negative, Fos, you know. It's just that right now, you only had three people out of eleven showed up. And I hate to vote on something where you don't have that much, you know, and then they say, well, you're putting a burden on me. Well, we're not, you know, it's, there's some really good things, you know, in this thing, but I just think they need to get, be more ed- be more educated. There's a point I'm trying to make, so, okay. Uh, item number two.
Business.
Consider approving a development agreement by between the city of Arkansas City, Lakeview Estates and Redwood Development Inc. For the Lakeview Estates project.
Can I do it? I'll do it. Um, Redwood Development and Lakeview Estates, um, LP, uh, wanted us to put in writing development agreement, which basically we've already agreed to every single one of these terms. It's just in the form that they're wanting it, uh, put into. Uh, what this does is base, basically, it, uh, puts covenants restrictions on the property in regards to, uh, the construction of the asphalt, uh, trail, uh, eight foot wide, three hundred foot long, which matches what we've already discussed. Construct, uh, restroom, um, men's and women's restroom, uh, with two stalls on each side and sink. Also, uh, extends the sewer from Taylor Avenue, uh, and west of Fourth Street to the property, which will allow for that public restroom to be serviced by sanitary sewer, which is a gravity sewer.
Would that restroom be heated and cooled or is this?
It'll be heated, so it'll be open year round. So it'll have heaters in it. Um, so it could be open, uh, all the time. And, uh, then also they have to construct the apartment complex, which they've already started process on it already. So really, this is just a housekeeping item. But we also have security, um, in the form of a letter of credit. So we already have, if for some reason they do not do these improvements, we have a ninety-five thousand dollars, which will help cover the cost to do these ourselves. If for some reason it was a fall through and, and they're moving forward, they're, they're, they're already digging dirt. So it's, there's, I don't think there's any risk of there. So just need approval from the commission.
Well, I will move that we approve a development agreement by and between the city of Arkansas City, Kansas, Lakeview Estates, is that ILP or just LP? And Redwood Development Incorporated for Lakeview Estates project.
I'll second that. Any discussion on it? If not, it's a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number two.
Consider a resolution authorizing the city to accept a bid from Worth Hydrochem of Oklahoma to supply clean-in-place chemicals, service, and training for water treatment facility staff for a amount not to exceed thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty cents.
First of all, uh, I remember the buildings and downtown buildings in the nineteen forties, and they looked a lot bigger back then. Cause I was three years old.
You were a lot littler, yeah.
Forty nothing.
They were big. There were many more.
Yeah, there were a lot more buildings. Uh, we're here to ask, answer any additional questions you may have in the work section. And if you have any, I'd be happy to have Rod Philo or Environmental Services Superintendent ask, answer them.
Did, did we ask you what, I may have forgotten that, cause I didn't write anything down, but, um, the, beyond the seven year minimum life, did we ask that?
Yeah, uh, Rod, you look, okay, right here.
Do you have an idea if it's another two or three years or?
Uh, yeah, we can't, can't see the future, but, uh, our expectation is to try and make those memories run as many years as possible. So seven years is, is kind of an average life span for them. But, uh, they have a lasting goal.
Okay. Nick, in our budget, how, how we got them budgeted? We got them on a ten year replacement, I mean, or?
They're seven year.
Oh, so you got them on a seven year. So anything goes over that, then it's just more.
Yeah, it just, it, it helps with, uh, longevity. But if you look at the dollar sense of it, in, in the end, you're really spending about the same amount of money at the end of the day. If you can go at least ten years. If you go anything past ten years, you're making money, so, or you're saving, not making, but you're saving money. So if we can get past that ten year mark with these, then we will be, every year past that, is just an additional savings of twenty some thousand dollars a year. And our goals, hopefully get twice as much life out of them, but we don't know. That's our goal.
This is kind of a silly question, but after, after we clean this first year, uh, will we be able to tell how much, how much we've used, you know, in that seven year period, I mean, on this cleaning, or, I mean.
A ratio.
Or, yeah, a ratio or?
Yeah, we'll probably get a ratio like you can with the, but we'll see what the recovery is. We hope, uh, hope the recovery is back pretty close to the original when we started.
And what do you mean by recovery? I'm trying to be.
Okay, right now, uh, differential pressure, salt passage is, is getting higher. That's where.
So that means, that means they're, they're plugging off, yeah.
So then you do the clean and place, and then you see where those grass come back together. And you probably won't get all the recovery if we're like we're in the middle, but we try to get all we can.
In that process, how long does that take? The, I forgot to ask you that question on Friday. How long does it take to clean those filters, uh, the process?
It's two cleanings, a low pH and a high pH. And I'm thinking probably an eight hour day when you do one skid, do one skid a day.
So you'll have to bypass that skid where you're cleaning it, where you go through the other skid and then?
We got, we got four, so we're, there's no problem there as far as running other trees.
Okay, I forgot to ask that question on Friday. I don't know, then may have some question.
I said, are, you know, that you said the ratio of the amount of water bypassing, is that where we should be, where it is right now? Or are we, are they, are they deteriorating faster than expected or less, or is it right where it is?
We're, uh, once a year, clean and place is very important.
Okay.
And it all depends on your source of water. That's what I'm trying to say. And the reason for a recommendation for the better chemical, cause the magnesium we have in our wells is, are pretty harsh.
Okay, yeah.
Do we have magnesium in all our wells?
Yes.
What, what is the breakdown of that magnesium per thousand? I mean, what, how bad is that? Do you remember?
Uh, I remember, seems like if, if we didn't treat the water, it would be higher than what we recommend.
That's good.
I didn't like the truth.
How, how do we treat the magne- 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 magnesium? Magnesium?
Manganese.
Manganese, manganese. Yeah, do, do we do it with the lime or the?
Uh, well, actually with chlorine.
Chlorine.
With chlorinated nitric to hit the plant. And, uh, when you get the chlorine, it oxidizes man- manganese towards the precipice. I mean, they separate from the water. So then, then we were using limes to raise the pH. So all that would settle out together. That's how we order manganese in the past.
All right.
Now it does like the green sand filters.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the City of Arkansas, Kansas City to accept the bid from Worth Hydrochem of Oklahoma. To supply clean-in-place chemical service and training for the water treatment facility, for not to exceed thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-two point eight zero.
Second that. Okay, it's been moved and second, uh, any discussion? I've got one thing, uh, so, uh, on the cleaning part, it'll take what, three, four, it, it'll take, uh. We've got four filters, so it'll take eight hours on each one, and then the training part of it, it'll be what, three days, it'd be a?
Yeah, training goes right with it.
Okay.
Worth Hydrochem is, well, the way they put it, tear the boots on the ground for each to, they do their work for them.
Okay.
They're familiar with their system and with their clean and place system, so the training will start as we're, as we're doing it, so.
Okay.
Okay, and these are already set on a seven year rotation to replace them?
No, uh, the reason I'm, I'm recommending the more expensive chemical, we wanna get more than seven years, uh, we wanted to, everything possible, get all the likely.
When, when we set that rate of what it takes per thousand gallons, it includes that seven, that seven year replacement on there, so it's included in the, the co- cost to treat water, so it is included already in there.
Exactly.
And that's based on seven year.
Yes.
And if we, if we get longer than that, we're just.
Yeah, our cost per thousand goes down in that section.
Yeah. Okay, is there any other discussion on it? If not, it's a voice vote, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, number three.
This is for a very, very small, um, piece of right of way, um, it's twenty foot easement, just off of G Street. If you turn to Exhibit A, Sheet Two of Two, you can actually see where that easement's located, it's a very, very small easement, and what it does is, um, allows them to go through and, uh, they're gonna be putting in, a new power line through there. So really, we don't, we're not requesting any compensation for this easement, but we do need to approve the easement for Westar.
So that's in addition to the last one?
Yes, there was a small one that we did by the Chestnut Booster Station, and this is just a s- part of that, um, big project that they have. And they discovered they didn't have an easement, so they wanted to make sure they had the easement.
Now, easement's just right here, man?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I make resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas, Kansas City to execute a grant of right of way agreement with Kansas Gas and Electric Company, a subsidiary of Westar Energy, Inc.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and second, any other discussion on it? If not, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, number four.
Okay, back in April seventeen, two thousand eighteen, we actually approved resolution, two thousand eighteen oh four, thirty-one seventy, authorizing the city to enter, into a project agreement with KDOT. This is kind of that next step in order for us to get the mill and overlay. The reason why it's taken so long for us to get there is twofold, we wanted to see kind of where our budget was for our streets. Because when we originally did that, we had a whole bunch, it was a lot big, lot bigger project than what it is, what we're recommending currently. What we're recommending with, with this project is, is basically to do, uh, the mill and overlay, um, only and maybe some surface, um, subsurface repair. Uh, and very, very little curb and gutter repair in that project. Our portion, um, of our city funds to do, uh, the entire project, which is from mill and overlay, from basically Harrison Avenue to Madison Avenue. Um, is anticipated, total project cost is four hundred thousand, but the city's portion is sixty-two thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars. Broken down, um, we are responsible for, uh, a hundred percent of the engineering cost, which is twenty-five thousand dollars. And responsible for ten percent of the construction administration, construction staking and inspection services. The grand total for, um, Smith and Oaks is sixty-six thousand eight hundred and forty dollar, um, agreement to provide construction and engineering services. It's really a pretty easy project, cause like I said, we're just doing a mill and overlay, um, of that entire area.
We don't have any water lines or sewer lines, it needs to be?
There's gonna be one p- part of this water line that we're gonna look at timing, and that's another reason why we're trying to speed this up too. Is because our water, um, we're gonna be doing a water line project for Canpack as part of the Westar project, we're doing a water line relocation. So if we can get this scheduled, um, to take place right after we do that water line relocation, then we won't have to tear up the road and redo it again, so that's another reason why we're looking at it.
How, how big a line is that in there?
Um, it's going to be a, ah, I don't want you to quote me, I, it's gonna be at least a, I think, a twelve inch line is what it is.
It'd be a big line, yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna be providing to Canpack, may even be a sixteen, but I, I don't know for sure.
Now.
But it's not going to exist.
So we already did from the levee to the bypass, this gets from the bypass up to Madison.
That's correct. Madison, that is correct. Yes.
And then the, the downtown area, the roads are still pretty good?
The downtown area is not eligible for C clip.
Okay.
C clip is not, because C clip is only for, it, it took the place of the clink projects, remember, Kansas connecting links, C clip took its place. So C, clink money can, and C clip money can only be used for state highways, that traverse through your cities.
Okay, and the state highway turns.
Turns left onto Madison, so we could do from Madison, um, to the west, to the bridge, in, in future years, but al- honestly, all we, all we can do is this portion. So you can see, to do that area's gonna be about a, you know, total of about four hundred thousand dollar project.
We do it quickly, we don't even have to divert traffic.
Well, honestly, you, you really, I mean, it's, now's a good time to do it.
Yeah. Now is a good time.
That's different.
I know, I'm trying to make this bigger and make it.
Oh, that's not in there.
It's not in that, it's.
Yeah, we added this, um, today.
And the sidewalks, you said we don't, we're not doing any of those, uh, what is the condition of the sidewalks?
Poor.
I'm sure they're poor in that area, but we didn't do, um, sidewalks on, um, South Summit either, we did a, a few areas, but mainly, we did some curb and gutter. The problem we in, we run into is we really just don't have a big budget for road improvement, so that's why this has been put off for so long, cause we wanted to kind of see where we're at financially. Um, but I think we're comfortable proceeding with this project, given it's the cost sharing of it.
Ninety-ten.
And I said, like I said, uh, in here, our, will be about sixty-two thousand dollars is what our cost will be to the city by the time it's all, the project's completed.
Yeah, but most of that cost is just the engineering and the?
Well, twenty-five thousand, well, twenty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-four of this agreement, and then another thirty-three thousand for, uh, the actual construction portion.
So that twenty-five thousand is included in this?
The twenty-five is, so our, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
They already have the grant, or they're wanting to apply?
We have the grant already, the grant was approved, accepted actually back on April seventeenth of last year, is when we approved, the commission approved the grant.
I move that we authorize the City of Arkansas, Kansas City to enter into a construction engineering design and inspection contract with Smith and Oaks of Arkansas, Kansas City for the city connecting link improvement program. Surface preservation grant for South Summit Street. US one sixty-six mill and overlay project from Madison Avenue to, says here Tyler, is it Harrison?
Yeah, it's about Harrison, I believe where it's at.
To Ha- Harrison, not to exceed sixty-six thousand.
So it should be Harrison, not Tyler?
Well, it's in between Harrison and Tyler is where it is.
Okay, not to exceed sixty-six thousand eight hundred and forty.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna go to the south, it's gonna go as far as where we did the improvement last time. So we, we already went north of Tyler, uh, to the n- north of Tyler, just a little ways, so this will actually meet up with where we, uh, stopped the Tyler project. For the last South Summit Mill and Overlay project.
I'll second it.
And, uh, how come we didn't hear about this before?
As far as?
Yeah, how did this didn't get in the packet?
Um, because of timing wise from him, um, I mean, we could wait till, till the next meeting, but it, it pushes him, he had another project that he's working on now, Smith and Oaks. Um, they just were approved to move forward on the, uh, uh, Creekstone Phase Two, so they're doing all the site civil work for, for them. So their schedule is getting really, really tight, cause they're gonna be spending a lot of time working on that for them, and so we could wait two weeks, but, uh.
So are they just, they?
They would start.
Smith and Oaks called and said, we better put this on the agenda, cause we're not gonna have time.
No, we talked about it last week, um, briefly, a little bit.
The, uh, letting make the KDOT, they'll let the contract and award it is May, this May, so.
So use it or lose it?
Yeah.
Right, use it or lose it.
And that reason why it's taken so long, cause honestly, that's on me, because I didn't know where we're gonna be financially, uh, with the street projects. And I didn't know how much we wanted to improve this right of way, um, because when we first did this project, it was six hundred and some thousand dollars, I, I think's what we originally looked at.
Intersections.
Intersections. And the problem, we just don't have the money for that, so I was trying to think of how can we could get it condensed down, but the other reason is too, is I think we can get some, um, benefit from having. The compass point area, when they do their, uh, when we let the bids for that, but also the timing, uh, with, um, Meese Construction doing the Lakeview Estates work. So I think there's gonna be a lot of paving going on in the area, so that may attract some lower bids. So from, from my perspective, is trying to figure out how we're gonna, what was the total budget going to be? Could we do more, and I really can't do more, or should we, um, not do it at all, and that was really a decision I just made in the last couple of weeks.
Just have to lose that grant.
But honestly, when I look at it, I, when I look at whether we lose a grant or not, would that sixty thousand dollars be better served in other pri- places? And at the time, it was anywhere from three hundred and sixty thousand to sixty thousand, so I was trying to figure out what would be best for the citizens and for the city. Cause honestly, that road, it's not the worst road we have in town by any means, but what will the condition of it be ten years from now, if we don't move forward? So that was kind of the struggle that I had and, and why we really didn't bring it up until the, the last week.
Well, it's very well traveled, because it's used by the trucks that turn there on no road.
Yeah, and it's honestly, it's a pretty simple project from an engineering perspective, cause really, all they're doing is surveying along that area and, and to put some plans together, some bid sheets. Um, and then, once the construction begins, then they do the inspection of the project, but. But we can wait two weeks, not an issue, I mean, we definitely can.
What would change in two weeks?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay, well, Karen made a motion, and Dwayne got a second, and we're, and we're still in the discussion, so. Is there any other more discussion?
I just, you know, I understand what you're saying about time, but, um. You know, we're not gonna put sidewalks in, we're not gonna do the kinds of things that we've done in other projects. We're just gonna do the route. Yeah. While we don't have to leave financial.
But here's, we could, if, 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 with what we have, we could add some sidewalks, but I, I need to get some direction from the commission. Of how extensive you want this to be.
Where's, where's the walk, where's the hike bike trail gonna come out at?
South of here.
Still south of here?
Yes, it's quite a, it's quite a way south of here. It remains on First Street, but then.
This is the bypass, so the hike bike is going.
But it comes out, doesn't it?
On First Street, it comes down to First Street, and then, and then it goes south.
And it doesn't come back to Summit till when?
Um, Taylor.
Till the cop.
Taylor, when we did the, uh.
Around Taylor.
Taylor doesn't show up here.
Yeah, cause it's, it's quite a way south of here.
Oh, Taylor, okay, Taylor is.
So this is Harrison and Tyler.
Mm-hmm.
And Taylor's on down two streets, isn't it?
Yee.
Yeah, after Tyler is pulled, then Taylor.
Then Taylor.
Yeah.
So if Taylor's on here, she doesn't like, the bottom street.
Yeah.
Wondering, wondering what the map gonna do?
If, if we look in, end up doing the sidewalks, we don't know, haven't really looked at them, have you?
No.
We didn't do sidewalks on, on any of the mill and overlay projects we had.
On North Summit either, we just did, just the curbs.
We just did curb and gutter, some dryways.
Well, didn't we look at all the approaches?
We did, we did look at some approaches.
Are we gonna be doing all those?
Well, the prob- the difference with those two projects was, the one on North Summit was sales tax money, and so we had additional funds, this one is not sales tax money, this is just.
This is what we have.
This is what we have.
How much do we have for streets?
Um, about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, I believe, is what we have for streets.
Per, per year.
Mm-hmm.
The difference between what we did from Walnut to Kansas Avenue, you have highly tr- high traffic on the intersections, this portion down here, you don't have that much traffic.
Yeah, on the Monroe, the cross sections, you don't have as much traffic.
Yeah.
But we didn't do sidewalks up north, we did a few sidewalks, so, yeah, it's a little, I'm not gonna say we didn't do any sidewalks, we did very little sidewalks. But we did some of the approaches and some curb, hot mark curb and gutter, we did quite a few approaches, we did all the cross streets.
We did most approaches up there. Yeah. Yeah, they're really nice.
Yeah.
Are we doing those here?
No.
No.
That, that, that gets, yeah, this is just grind it off and put new asphalt on top and fix some of the base issues.
Just straight down the street.
Like I said, I think the cost estimate has around six hundred thousand to do the cross streets, and it was almost a million by the time you add the curb and gutter and approaches and, and everything, and sidewalks, I believe is what it was.
Six.
So, cause we'd worked up two estimates on this.
Nine, ten, eleven hundred.
But just to do a simple mill and overlay, it's, it's gonna be at least three hundred.
This is a budget way, the low budget way to keep the, keep the road going.
This is a very low budget way to do it.
This is five blocks, so.
Well, it's more than five blocks.
Six blocks?
Well, it's, it's a little, it may be a little longer.
Yeah, there's some long blocks in there.
But if we don't do it, it's gonna be a long time before we.
It'll probably be another five years, probably before we get to it.
Well, yeah, we did that.
I don't think we can wait that long in South Summit.
Well, by that time, it's probably gonna be, it's gonna cost a little, probably a lot more, I mean, if the road would be in a lot worse shape where it is right now, wouldn't it, Nick?
And we already have the approval of the grant.
You just never know, Jay, it just makes sense.
You know, honestly, it'll probably be the shape that North Summit's in, so from, it'll probably be in the condition that Kansas Avenue to Radio Lane's end, if you wait another five, ten years. That'll probably be the shape that it's in, cause I don't think, it's been, I think, two thousand one was, and two thousand, two thousand one was the last time, I think, North Summit was done, I believe. So it's been quite a few years, and then you can see what twenty years will do to a road, and that's probably be about the shape this will be in another five to ten years.
But not, nowhere else, this is the only other section we can get the clip?
Minus the Madison over to the bypass, yes.
So is our best chance at some clip?
Yes, and we were already, were awarded this money, I mean, it's just a matter of us ex- which, just moving forward with the project, and like I said, it was, it was on me, cause. Honestly, we, Mike and I have had a lot of debates about what to do on it, looking at budgets, and it's just, I wish we had enough, I wish we had s- another five, six hundred thousand dollars.
Capital Improvement Committee last year, twenty eighteen, for the street CIP tenure, we had five, five point one one million dollars for this year, and we only had funding for a hundred and sixty thousand, so. So we're pushing everything out.
I mean, you certainly can't ask for sales taxes.
Quarter cent sales tax, quarter cent sales tax.
Is there any more, any more discussion on it?
Nope.
Okay, it's a voice vote, uh, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh. City manager updates.
Okay, this Friday is the Barney Breakfast, and it starts at six o'clock, I believe.
Six to eight thirty.
Six to eight thirty in the morning, so if you can help out, it'll be at the Northwest Community Center, that'd be great.
Like five AM?
Well, you and I'll be five AM, and I'll be there, I'll be able to be there, I have a meeting in Wichita. Well, you and I'll be five AM, and I'll be there, I'll be able to be there, I have a meeting in Wichita that morning, but, um, I'll be there for the first few hours to help out. Um, and then, uh, the final C I P meeting will be Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, at the water treatment facility. Um, we're wrapping up the C I P process, um, and what we need to do is we need to look at, uh, dates in April for our retreat, budget retreat. We're kind of leaning towards the thirteenth, I believe, which is Saturday, April thirteenth.
Oh. I'm going to have this, goodness gracious, I guess I don't have to be up there.
We could do it on a Friday, if you'd prefer a Friday, that's not a problem, but I know that it's difficult for some of you to, to get off during the week, so.
Yeah, my schedule's pretty full on during the week.
Sounds funny.
I don't know if I was necessarily talking about you, sir.
I know, I had to throw that in.
Well, I think.
How does thirteenth sit for you?
I, I'm su- that should work, some Fridays would be alright, I mean, I'd, I could, with good, uh, planning, I could.
Yeah, but this will be like that day long, you know, or half day.
Yeah.
Day long, yeah.
So April thirteenth, um, I believe we all started probably about nine o'clock, we'll breakfast there eight-thirty, if you wanna be there at eight-thirty. But we'll start at nine, and usually we get done, I think about two, so.
Mm-hmm, okay.
We'll do it April thirteenth.
Uh, we'll have to see. I can't make it come in.
Do you still want to have the study session on the twelfth?
No, we'll cancel the study session on the twelfth.
We can do it Saturday.
Yeah, I can be.
I just won't schedule anything for the agenda on the fourteenth, or the sixteenth.
Uh.
Um.
Who are we gonna have in it?
I don't know, is a cabin for it available?
I'll have to look, uh, it probably is.
Okay. I assumed, I'm sorry.
Are you handicap accessible?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, actually it is. Um, some of the employees are gonna be participating in the Cali County Emergency Management Tabletop, which is Thursday, March twenty-eighth, from nine to eleven.
What, what is that?
It's basically where they do a simulation of an emergency.
Okay, alright.
Uh, and they throw curveballs at you and see how you respond to them. Uh, last item is, uh, stay session will be noon Friday, March twenty-ninth, and, uh, we're gonna look at chapter six of the governing body handbook. And we're also gonna do the audit that day too, so, 'cause the audit is complete and ready to go, so we'll have the audit presentation that day. I didn't know if you had it approved or not. The other thing is they're having, um. Chief is having a, what's it called, a wet down and push in?
Yeah.
Wet down and push in for the new fire engine Saturday, this Saturday, starting at, uh, noon, they're gonna s- have, uh, kind of like a, a show and tell. But then the push downs at one.
We're gonna open up the, uh, firehouse for, uh, the public and, and who wants to come, uh, from, it'll probably run from twelve to maybe three. We give them tours and be showing, uh, the different equipment do, uh, the, our, our capabilities. And then, uh, that day at one o'clock, we're gonna put the new engine into service and those. Doing it a hundred years ago when they had the carts and, and the hand carts and the horses, what you'd do is, you had to push it in the station. So we're gonna have, uh, a lot of retired firefighters there and, and, uh, and anybody in the community wants to help us push it in the firehouse. And, uh, put it, put it in service, so it'll be ready to respond after one o'clock.
How many horses is that?
You got you sitting on a hill so they can kind of get a little help?
It's got a little bit of hill.
It's got a little bit of hill. But, uh.
How many horses?
Huh?
How many horses?
Four.
A new fire truck alone has four horses?
Four, three or four. Yeah, but, uh, so everybody's welcome, I think it'll be a good time, we'll have some, uh, cake and some snacks and beverages and.
What, uh?
Like, uh, community come out and, and tour the, the firehouse, we're kinda.
We're running over, huh?
Off the main drag, so it's gonna be, try to get nice, uh, put out a press release, hopefully get a lot of the public out there to view.
Chief, when is the health there this year, is it gonna be in Arc City or?
Yes, it is, yep.
When is that?
Uh, April.
I just saw a flyer on it.
Ed, we needers.
April twenty-seventh? Twenty-seventh, yeah, so April twenty-seventh, so we're good there.
Yeah, in the April.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be here, so.
And that's gonna be at Daggers Business Building or?
Right.
I think we're gonna rename it the Warren Center.
Warren Center.
Just messing.
Alright. Uh. I guess, what about city?
The executive session.
Okay. I've moved that we go into recess to the executive session for twenty minutes for consolation for with attorney for the governing body, which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship pursuit to K A S, eight, uh, seventy-five days, forty-three, nine, uh, B two, to discuss acquisition of real estate. Properties.
City Attorney, City Manager and Finance Director.
So it'll be what, uh, five after seven?
Seven oh five.
Yeah. Seven oh five.
I second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, a bit any, uh.
Who's here?
Andrew.
I move we recess to executive session for discussion of acquisition of real property that is exempt from K S A number, number, number.
For?
For, for discussion about acquisition of real estate.
Till?
Till seven fifteen, to include the same people in as we had before.
So I get, and just so I'm clear, this was the same basis we used to go in for the, for the, I said included attorney-client.
Exactly.
You weren't.
Attorney-client privilege in the acquisition of real estate.
Same thing that was done before. They may not like that.
All in favor say aye.
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 Should've asked, asked for board of time, any? Second, all in favor say aye.